Since he is coming, I want to defer to Tuesday meeting.
Okay.
Second?
Mr. Mohammedish is coming for the Tuesday meeting, explain the other.
Well, let's just defer to the regular council meeting and then we'll invite him to come to the special to talk about it.
That's it, I want to defer.
To defer?
Yes.
You don't want to move it to first reading?
Do you want to move it to first reading? I just want him to come in so we can be clear.
He'll be in on Tuesday. Is that correct, Mr. Mohammedish?
We're going to move it to first reading, but we will have an invite for Mr. Mohammedish for the special for next week to talk about this item. Roll call to advance to first.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James? Absent. Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes.
K is an ordinance amending section 20 T colon 5 dash 6 stopping and standing at certain times as would prohibit stopping or standing on Broad Street, East Side from Raymond Boulevard to Fulton Street at any time and West Side from Raymond Boulevard to New Street at any time.
As a whole...
He's coming in, so he can explain it all.
We'll move to first reading.
Move it to first reading. Roll call, council.
It used to be the east. It used to be.
That's why I'm swiveling my head back and forth.
Absolutely.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James? Absent. Payne? Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes.
L is an ordinance amending Title V of the Amusements and Amusement Business. This ordinance would regulate the license of social clubs?
I don't have any problem moving this from communications to first reading, but I think we should sit down and discuss this in detail because there's a lot of language there that needs to be reviewed and we shouldn't really vote on this without a consensus that this is the way to go.
My second.
But even before we move to first reading, I think we should bring in the deputy mayor and sit down with him and discuss this before he goes any further. So I ask to defer.
Do you want to delay moving it to first?
And invite Deputy Mayor Salahudin?
He indicated to me today that he wants to meet with a representative number of the council so that he can explain to us the procedures to how people are going to apply and be able to get this license and explain to the social club owners how they can be legalized.
Do you want to defer this to the special?
I met with him when I was preparing this type of ordinance and I agree in concept with what he proposes to do. I think every one of us should sit down with him as a body and review this thing because this has a huge impact on communities.
So do you want to do...
Roll call to move to first reading.
Move it to first reading, but with an invite.
Yes.
Okay. You do want to move it to first?
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
He indicated that in the meeting yesterday.
Advance to first. Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James? Absent. Stay.
Wasn't here.
James?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes, but clear, Mr. Clerk, this is moved with an invite.
Yes.
Okay, great. Next item. I'm sorry, we've had a request from Councilman Amador to defer this item.
Madam President, before we do that, I had an opportunity to sit down with Councilman Ramos and review this issue. Moving it to first reading does not prevent us from having a meeting with the superintendent or the assistant superintendent to review this. Very basically, what we're doing here is approving a bond of $63 million for various projects related to schools throughout the city. And I don't have a problem, and I told Councilman Ramos and I'll tell everyone and I'll tell the entire North Ward community, and those communities will be benefiting from this, the use of these funds, that I wholeheartedly support. This is not an issue of the east versus the west, or the issue versus the north, or like we used to behave in the old days. We all benefit if one project gets done in one particular area of the city, and I'm here to support everyone in various communities that we represent. But I think it's appalling that we have $63 million of bond money where the East Ward residents and taxpayers contributed to, like everyone else did in the city, and we get to the last phase of the appropriation of these funds and we don't have whatever money was appropriated for the schools in East Ward, which totaled about $6 million originally. We get to the end and we don't have one dime appropriated for any project in the East Ward community, in the East Ward educational community. I think it's appalling. I think this was a disrespect to the voters and to the residents of the East Ward, and I intend to voice, as I did Tuesday, and intend to continue to voice my opinion, to make sure and raise my voice as much as I can, and with the help of the entire community, to make sure that the Newark Public Schools is embarrassed enough to make sure that one or two projects, and I have one in mind that should be done, and if they had the mindset of helping the children and the residents of East Ward at heart when they first decided, made these decisions. There's one particular project that has been in the back burner for quite some time, which is to buy a piece of land across the street from where the Oliver Street School is going to be built. And we have been informed time and time again that we, the school construction corporation, does not have the funds to buy that piece of property, to turn it into a recreation center for that school and for that community. Here's a perfect opportunity to put aside $3, $4, $5 million, whatever it's necessary, and we're not asking for a lot, and say, "We're taking the lead and we're going to buy the property." Just when the announcement is made to build a school, we have that property available to build a recreation site. This is one idea that should have been on the table from the very beginning. And for them to present this, ignoring those needs of the East Ward residents, and more particularly those kids, and those administrators, and those parents who live around Oliver Street School, this is an insult to the intelligence of our community. I intend to continue to raise my voice. A lot of people in our community are very, very upset with this, and I will not be quiet until we get something that we deserve. Out of the $63 million, I'm all supportive, and you can't find a bigger supporter of renovating the school stadium. For those of us who have been around for about 10 years, I've seen the frustration on those who have been here before, and Councilman Ramos, and Councilman Quintana, and Councilman Gonzalez, who come from that area, because school stadium represents something to this city, particularly to the educational community. And I'm not against it, on the contrary, but I think that out of $63 million, that should be a small, a small token, and used for the benefit of the East Ward residents. So I'm looking for the support from the entire council, and we're not asking for a lot to stand by me and say, "We support the renovation of the school stadium, or the athletic facility at Week Week High, or any other proposal that is in this list, but we also believe that a little piece of the pie should go to the East Ward."
What would I, Madam President?
Councilman Ramos?
Yeah, I just want to be clear that I do respect the intentions of my East Ward colleague, and I will be there when you have those discussions with Dr. Lindgren and Dr. Bolden regarding the needs of the East Ward community as it relates to this specific school board bond. You know, I am very anxious to move this forward as it relates to school stadium. As you mentioned, you know, this facility, unlike other parts of the city, you know, the North Ward does not have a recreation center. We don't have an athletic facility for our local high school, and school stadium has been in disrepair for quite some time. You know, my office has been very actively involved with the superintendent of schools, with key members of our community, and the administration, in putting forth a design for school stadium that I think not only meets the needs of the North Public Schools, but also meets, you know, the needs of our local community, you know, as far as recreation space is concerned. So I think at this point, you know, the district's position, you know, along with our position, is based on the projected costs, you know, of the restoration, renovation of school stadium, you know, and the fact that a number of these projects that were outlined as part of the original bond, and I just want to note to the council that we have already voted on two amendments to this bond. This would actually be the third amendment. And based on the fact that a number of the original projects were tied into greater projects where new schools were supposed to be built that will not be built anytime soon, that was a justification for the district reworking their bonds. So this has been amended twice, approved twice by this body. This is actually the third amendment. But I just want to be clear that while I wholeheartedly support school stadium and want the support of the council to move this forward, you know, I do respect, you know, the issues that East Ward Councilman is supporting, and I will be there when he meets with the members of the district to get, you know, some of the needs satisfied.
Madam President, just to add something to what I was saying before...
Councilman Amador, and then Councilman Gonzalez.
Just to add something to what I was saying before. Oliver Street School, which presumably will be, an announcement will be made sometime in July that the new construction will take place, had $623,000 allocated for it, for additional monies that would be necessary to build the school. In this case, could be used for the recreational facility that we're looking for, or for the acquisition of the land. Same thing with South Street School. They're supposed to be, to start construction soon with the announcement being made sometime in July. Why take away those two amounts when we know that those two schools are going to be built and there's no recreation facility to provide a release for those kids from those two schools? It's insensitivity, to say the least. And I am appalled at this. I can understand, for example, that East Side High School, which had $2.6 million allocated, knowing quite well that East Side's not going to be built for the next 10 years. I don't have a problem with that. Use the money someplace else in the meantime. But for Oliver Street School and South Street School, which are basically at the top of the list of the new schools to be built, and take away the ability to find space to build a recreation site with this money, that's a lack of respect.
Councilman Gonzalez.
I totally agree with Councilman Ramos and Councilman Amador's position, and I will be strongly supporting the both positions. We should have, let's say, the school stadium, but at the same time, we should provide some monies for the East Ward, the money that has been taken from them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Roll call, I'm moving to first reading.
Are we moving this to first or deferring?
We're moving to first, is that my understanding? We're now moving, we originally agreed to defer, he now is willing to move it to first.
Can the amendments that he's trying to make, can it be included in this amendment?
Yeah, the way the process works from my involvement is, you know, the district initiates the bond request, it goes to the state board that's comprised of city representatives, state representative. Once they approve it, then it comes back to the council for our consideration.
Sure, if we did that, we'd have to go back.
And remember, all we're considering here is the last two columns, which is the third amendment. The first two amendments have already been approved.
Exactly.
So in this case, we're looking at the third adjustment to this original bond.
Well, in as far as what Councilman James is saying, even though the money has been designated for specific projects, there's one area that is very general, which is local cost, new schools. And it's 2-point-something million dollars, which has not been designated for any particular school or anything at all. They could very well go into that pot, that specific pot, and leave everything else alone, and take that money and use it for that specific proposal. The point is that we need a commitment in writing from the district that this money will be used for that raising.
Well, I support, yes.
Absolutely.
I was in the middle of... I was just asked the question.
Oh, no, absolutely. Council as a whole to move to first reading.
With an invitee to the superintendent.
With the invitee to the superintendent.
Not the assistant superintendent.
Right, but to the superintendent.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes. Mr. Clerk, before we move on, I'd like to be recorded as a yes on 7R 4D and 7R 4D. I'm sorry, it's the same, 7R 4D, as well as 7R, the whole harmless agreement for the East Ward, 7R 9J. 7R 4D and 7R 9J. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
We have disposed of 8O. 8P is an ordinance denying five-year tax abatements. Council, the hold to move to first reading. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Can we combine this one with another one that we had before? Denying, there's another one. A1.
A1 is canceling, this is denying.
Canceling, and this is denying, okay. Yes.
And A, they have it and we're taking it back. This is not giving it to the first place.
You okay?
Can I also, Madam President, can I also ask something? Since we have the name, the address, the block number, the lot number, and the ward, why not add an additional column indicating the reason why we're canceling this?
Mr...
A very simple note saying, "No information available."
They failed to submit documents.
Well, we need to know the reason.
It's stated, "Based upon their failure to submit required documents within the 30-day date period."
Oh, they all fall in the same category?
They're all, that's the reason for denying it.
All right, that's fine.
Roll call.
Sorry about that.
Continue the roll call.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes.
8Q is an appointment by the office of the mayor for Christina Veliz as a Class 4 member of the Central Planning Board. Council as a whole, please.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes.
8Q is an appointment by the office of the mayor for Christina Veliz as a Class 4 member of the Central Planning Board. Council as a whole, please.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes. These are duplications.
9B is an ordinance accepting Seabird Court as part of the public road system.
Is there a second?
Oh, just...
Is there a second?
The limit is...
Second. Second of our council, Rice.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes. Next item, I counsel as a whole, roll call, please.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Motion to accept all pre-printed motions. I include in that the motions that were made by the council members during this meeting.
Councilman Amador.
I'd like to have a list of all the handicap parking locations in the East Ward. Oops. From the signs and... A letter should go out to also, for a meeting to the Newark Public Schools, whoever is responsible for safety and security. A gentleman was mugged and hurt very much yesterday on Ferry Street by a bunch of, a group of students that came out of East Side High School. And I haven't called the gentleman yet, but I have his name up there. He's not a resident of the city. We need to sit down with Recreation, Neighborhood Services and Recreation to talk about the youth games, what's going on in there. And the last one is the request that I made before to remove the yellow lanes on the curve at the corners of Lang and New York Avenue, now that the stop signs are going to be posted.
Roll call, please.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes. Councilman Gonzalez?
I don't have any motions.
Councilman James?
No motions, but I have a community forum, what to expect next, what to expect South Ward Summer 2008. I'd like you to join myself, members from the mayor's office, and my municipal colleagues, council colleagues on this Saturday, May 10th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Clinton Hill Early Childhood Community Center, 420 Hawthorne Avenue, Newark, New Jersey.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes.
Madam President, before, I apologize. Is it possible for the entire council to support the Abbott School funding, the lawsuit that is being instituted with the state of New Jersey?
I plan on reading this tonight. Can we do it on Tuesday?
That's fine.
I too have mine saved and read, to read.
Can we do Tuesday? I definitely want to just read.
Right. Councilman Ramos?
A letter to our presiding judge. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet with, you know, a number of my homeowners, and they presented some concerns regarding the warrants that are being issued in response to code enforcement violations. It seemed like every single homeowner that complained about, you know, one of these warrants being issued, they claimed that they never received the original notice on the violation. So it's something that I hear more and more, and I think we need to have an opportunity to discuss this with Judge Munoz, to make sure that these violations are properly being sent to the homeowners, that we maybe look at some creative ways of notifying when these homeowners have been cited for specific violations. Many times, they come to court without really knowing why they're required to be at court, and in many instances, become very concerned when they find out that there is a warrant, a bench warrant out for their arrest. Just a few announcements, on Thursday, May 8th, you know, my office is hosting a Bloomfield Avenue Safety Meeting at the Vince Lombardi Center at 6:30. This is an open invitation to businesses in the area and many of our local residents. On Saturday, May 10th, you know, we're proud to announce our first-ever North Ward graffiti removal activity. We're going to be meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Broadway, near Elwood Avenue, actually, at the McDonald's on Broadway, and hopefully, our volunteers won't eat too much, and then we can go out, you know, with representatives from the Department of Neighborhood Services to clean up, you know, a number of sites in the North Ward. I would ask anyone that's interested in volunteering, we have a limited number of volunteer spots available, to contact my office or visit our website. And lastly, on Thursday, May 22nd, in collaboration with Deputy Mayor Salahudin, we will be hosting a meeting with our social club operators at Immaculate Conception Church on Woodside Avenue at 6:30. Again, if you operate a social club, even outside the North Ward, and you want to come in and talk to representatives from the city, you're invited. Contact my office if you want to register or want to get more information. That's it, Madam President.
Second. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
C.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Wrong?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes. Mr. Clerk, let the record reflect that Councilman Payne and Councilman Ramos have a freeholder meeting, which is why they'll be absent for the balance of the meeting.
Thank you. Just another note to the office of the mayor and to Deputy Mayor Ron Salahudin. This is now my fifth request for the Restaurant Review Committee to be called. We have gone over this and over this, myself and Councilman Ramos, about this restaurant committee coming together. It is now the summer, and we need this group to come together. My representative has not been contacted or called, and neither has all the other council persons who made recommendations. Again, this is now my fifth request to have this meeting called. Also, another fifth request to traffic and signals regarding a traffic study and recommendations for the corner of Sanford Avenue and South Orange Avenue by St. Mary's Villa. Again, I've requested numerous times a traffic study and those recommendations to be sent to my office to make that area more safe for the seniors that are crossing the street from St. Mary's Villa, going to the drugstore and the other places they have to go to. It is a very fast avenue, and traffic and accident problems are prone because of the way that that area is cut and the necessary signals that need to be placed there. So for the fifth time again, I am requesting that traffic study be finished, conducted, and the recommendations to be acted upon and sent to my office. Just a few quick announcements. Just want to invite all West Ward residents and parents particularly, or parents from all over the city in general, to come to our, the West Ward Collective Incorporated Education Committee's first annual parent conference. It's entitled, "Promises Broken, Promises Kept: Bridging the Gap Between Parents and Schools." It will be taking place on May 17th, it's a Saturday, May 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:15 p.m. at West Side High School, 403 South Orange Avenue in Newark, New Jersey. We'll have special guests, workshops, panel discussions, vendors, store prizes, free breakfast, free lunch, and much more. Please contact my office at 973-733-6427 for more information. We've put together a conference that seeks to empower parents to be better advocates for their children, to inform them of how to be better advocates, and also to provide services that their children should be made aware of, there's supplemental services, and the outgrowth we hope from this conference will be a parent academy of all the schools in the West Ward specifically. So I encourage all parents to come on out and learn about what we're trying to do in the West Ward to effectively support education, public, private, charter, whatever, to best deliver the best product for our children. For citizens in the West Ward who would like to see their councilmen, I always say, "The adopter may not make house calls, but I do." adopter may not make house calls, but I do. To schedule a neighborhood walk, please contact my office on Saturdays and Sundays. I'll be glad to come out after 12 o'clock on Saturdays, after 2:00 p.m. on Sundays, to walk your neighborhood, to, to work to solve problems. The only requirement is that you must start or join a block association on your block. Again, call the same number for that, 973-733-6427, and that is all that I believe I have.
I'd like to second the, his motions, especially the last one, because he rarely does walk in the community on Saturdays and Sundays. People tell me on Sunday that he's out there walking. Roll call, please.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez absent. James?
Yes.
Payne absent. Dunne absent. Ramos absent. Rice?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes. Councilwoman?
Yes, I have one announcement, Madam Chair. Harmony Day at UMDMJ, as your DMJ Board of Concerned Citizens, is Friday, May the 9th. It's a scheduled day of events from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They have cultural, educational, employment fair, a health fair, the screening of the documentary, The City of Promise. This is the 40th anniversary, to commemorate the 40th anniversary of the North Rebellion, and so, and the lunch speaker, lunch is between 12 and 1. And the lunch speaker for the day is the president of People's Organization for Progress, Mr. Larry Ham. And so I'm asking the community to come out and support this event. If you need more information, you can contact Pat Hunt. The number is 973-972-5529. That's 973-972-5529 on Friday, May 9th, 2008.
That's it?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez absent. James?
Yes.
Payne absent. Dunne absent. Ramos absent. Rice?
Yes.
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes. One motion, Mr. Clerk. A motion of solemn regret at the passing of Louise Jarrett, a longtime community activist and a retired employee of the fire department. And yes, we did read your card at the funeral. That's it?
Second. Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez absent. James?
Yes.
Payne absent. Dunne absent. Ramos absent. Rice?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
President Trump?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Ramos absent. James?
Yes.
Payne absent. Dunne absent. Ramos absent. Rice?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
President Trump?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. That's right.
Let's go home.